Could have your attention, please. Okay, we'll call this meeting to order, and if we could have roll call.
Mr. Holden.
Present.
Mrs. Gados.
Here.
Mr. Giuella.
Present.
Mr. Goodt-Cobb.
Here.
Mrs. Kilmart.
Present.
Mrs. Koutash.
Here.
Mr. Menotti.
Here.
Dr. Ritter.
Here.
And Mrs. Yurich.
Here.
If we could all please rise and salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Okay, next item is approval of the agenda.
So, Mr. Chairman, but I would like to make a motion to add addendum items number nine, 10, and 11, which are consideration of the board to approve continuing participation in Connecticut Open Food Certification. Number 10 would be the consideration of the board to accept on behalf of the Booth Hill School, a donation of $607.76 from Stop &amp; Shop Rewards Program, and $895 from the Robert Taylor Photography to be used in direct service to Booth Hill students. And the last one, number 11, consideration of the board to approve the request of SHS Gold Club to conduct fundraising activities for the school year to benefit the Shelton High School Boys Program.
Motion to add that amendment to the agenda has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, are there any other adjustments?
I have an amendment to add after item 15, Highlights Executive Session to Discuss Legal Matters.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made, the second, is there any discussion, sense of none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, now on to the motion as amended to approve the agenda, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, okay. Presentations and recognition, Dr. Clouette.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to begin tonight with our new monthly feature at our meetings of recognizing an innovative educator. We have many innovative educators in the school district in Shelton, and we are proud tonight to recognize the final innovative educator of the year, and will continue next year, and that is Mr. Robert Szczesny from SIS. Let's have a big hand for Mr. Szczesny. I would ask Mr. Serenich, Principal of Shelton Intermediate School, to please step forward. He's going to show a slideshow, a great slideshow that Mr. Szczesny put together.
Here he is.
Mr. Szczesny, stand in, Mr. Serenich.
Hi.
Mr. Szczesny is not able to be in attendance tonight because the school year and the weather didn't cooperate as we had hoped, and so he made a plan to be on vacation with his son, and he is riding, I think he's riding mountain bikes.
Mountain biking in the Colorado Rockies.
In Colorado Rockies, that sounds pretty good. But he made an effort to put this together for us, and of course what we're recognizing is his great work here after year. And so, Mr. Serenich, you're going to show the...
I am, I have not seen this PowerPoint.
Okay.
This will be the first time, but I told Mr. S that I would do it for him. I'm going to attempt to call him really quick, because the last communication I had with him is... Yeah, he's just texting, he's like, "Now you can understand my whole point." I'm going to see if I can get him. Alright, so, as he was saying, he's in the Rockies, and he just does not have service. So, I will go through his profile. So, Mr. Szczesny obviously teaches a course that we created here in Shelton, it's a very unique course, and I think it's a compliment to why he won this award, why he won the award as being Innovator of the Month, like many of our Shelton teachers, just shows his creativity in trying to create a course that is definitely preparing our students for the 21st century. As you can see, the mindset of his course follows around the four Ps, projects, peers, passion, and play. Some of the board members I know have actually visited Mr. Szczesny and saw the work that he does, I know he has some PowerPoints in here to kind of show some of the work that his students do. The course itself, it's a science elective at SIS, it's working in the STEM field, and as the title says itself, it's all about inventing, it's where the students have invented. So, design thinking is a major aspect of the course itself. Within the course, there are different fields of study, students use Arduino boards, which are the little programming boards that starts the basic foundation of robotics or any type of programming. They work in a virtual lab that we set up with the help of the tech center to simulate, and they also create with some 3D printers we have here. So, here's some of the design thinking in action, what they'll be planning out, you can see on the laptop itself, there's where a student is actually planning and creating, I don't know what the object is, but that's the design that they'll use to put on the format to the 3D printer to obviously make some kind of object that they are producing. So, I know what this is and what Mr. Szczesny has there, but this is an idea of what you can see the course produces with the Inventors Lab. That little piece that you see down in the black was created out of 3D printer, it was actually designed by a student in terms of a scissor holder with a magnetic piece that they put in the 3D printer because they were always losing the scissors. So, now you can see that they actually, with the ideas and some of the, you know, when they talk about the design theory aspect and how you can solve problems, and then create the solutions to the problems and invent them right in the Inventors Lab themselves. This is another aspect that I saw a lot of students at SIS were clamoring to have, because it's the appropriate age group, they were making earbud storage, so many of our students use their earbuds, and this was a simple, again, problem, solution, and then invent that solution with the 3D printer in itself. This was a present for me on May 4th, as the students and staff know, I'm a huge Star Wars fan, so they made a light-up lightsaber May the 4th card for me that was presented to me on May the 4th. That still works, so when you hold the card, the lightsaber lights up, it was pretty neat. Kids thought about it, and they presented new things. Those are the Arduino boards, and what can be done in terms of robotics, like the basic ideas of robotics. And here is a video that he has of some of the work in action, so. Coding has been obviously a big thing that, you know, our superintendent has worked with our media specialists on, and we're putting it into our school system, but it's actually an aspect that's been working on in the Inventors Lab as well, they all go hand-in-hand, but it's an aspect that we're allowing our kids to do, they have to learn coding, it's the basic, the foundation of creation in a digital world. What you're seeing here is actually a simulated video or computer program that one of our students has put together with the use of coding. So, by responding, you know, the character is doing what you want, it shows graphics and designs within the program itself. This is another, just format of what the coding looks like on the computer for the children. So, this is a program that a student made to help study systems in the body in science. And again, I mentioned already the virtual lab, we have a virtual lab in the Inventors Lab, they work in the game Minecraft, which is just a virtual simulation, and some of the fascinating things is, when you have a virtual experience, the experiments that you can use and define, such as, I have firsthand witness where Mr. Szczesny would pose a question to students and ask about, you know, how things would work in zero gravity, would fire still burn if there was no oxygen, and they actually simulate it within Minecraft themselves and learn about it on top of the creation aspects. Here's another video with...
It does that, and every tick could be, like, it's on the unit, and when you're done, you break that, it'll stop the tick, and then you know, you count the items, and that's the amount of ticks that are expended.
So, your tick is your unit of time?
Yeah, and then your distance could be the loss.
And you're just, and so then you can calculate what?
We can calculate the speed.
Those are some of the aspects of what Minecraft looks like. As this bullet says, you know, the Inventors Lab is just a unique opportunity for kids to just experiment. Experimentation is the key for learning, experimentation is the key for creativity, and that's really what the whole course is about. He writes down here are some of the results, so. This was an issue in S Board Ed, you kind of love this particular aspect, these are the light covers that happen in the laboratories of the school that often would break, it's a very fragile piece, but a piece that, instead of actually ordering the pieces over, the kids found out that they could reproduce them on the 3D printer, so it's the cover that goes when you do the emergency pull-down. So, they were able to reinvent them through the 3D printer by taking measurements and design and replace them without having to order new light covers that broke in the laboratories So, as you can see, this is a part that, you know, there's a lot of soldering going on, this is something that they invented to pull carbon fumes and filter the air when working, all student-driven. This was part when we did the health seminar a few years back, and they were able to make interactive boards, touching, and I was there at the time, when you touch the fruit or the soda or the donut, if you're grabbing the piece of fruit, there would actually be audio that would tell you the nutritional value of the food that you were grabbing. So, it was a way to just kind of make a health lesson interactive. Oh, I think here's a video.
Chocolate cake is a subject of the field, which means chocolate cake is not like food.
And as a result, our superintendent, I was going to say, our superintendent has such a healthier diet after grabbing the chocolate cake in the soda. Oh, this was a, I actually saw this firsthand, too, what a student invented, this was a system that they put in place to find out when a plant needed to be watered, and working hand-in-hand with another student, I don't know if the video's going to pop up or not, it actually measured the moisture of the water, and then another student working in tandem with this young girl created an arm that would come and actually pour water when necessary. So, we were using it all the time in terms of, you know, Mr. Szczesny's room was right next to Mr. Wolf's room, which is the Life Lab, and to be able to water plants on the weekends, we can't get into the building, this is a perfect opportunity where kids can measure and gauge if watering needs to be done and get that done without actually unlocking the building on the weekends.
Great, where can I buy one?
Does it do dishes?
I think if you ask the student, they'll help. Oh, this was, again, if you've ever saw the movie, was it Big?
Yes.
The piano, this was a student who actually made a musical piece by stepping on it and making it.
Cool.
And here's a video.
That looks like you.
This might be the night. Oh, this is where they wired it to plants, so you're actually playing instruments by touching the different plants.
Wow, look at that.
This is one of the newest inventions that we just used, where a student made a soda fountain machine out of cardboard.
Wow.
That's one really good, so it's into the schools.
And then, this was a plan that was excellent, and Mr. Szczesny's been working with a lot of outside sources with the prosthetics, and this is an amazing aspect that this particular student had, just an amazing project, and I know there's going to be a video to show it in terms of her work with prosthetics and what she wants to carry, and she's in eighth grade and moving on to a high school, how we're going to carry this forward with So, unfortunately, I'm not doing the presentation justice, all the technology that we could have here in Shelton, we just can't get Mr. Szczesny connected to Colorado. But I hope he can come back here another time and give a fair presentation to the board. He really, with the idea of innovation, thank you, the Innovative Educator of the Month, it truly defines Mr. Szczesny, what he's got, what he's brought to our kids and the creativity and what's going to blossom out of this program, I'm so proud of, and thank you for honoring me. Thank you very much. (applause)
I hope that our fourth graders that are here today and the parents with them see the kind of things we have ready, there's some great things after seeing your next stop at Perry Hill, you will really love that, but when you get to middle school, you're going to have some great opportunities, and we're so proud of our teachers, so, again, thank you. I'd like to ask Mrs. Henkel, please take Henkel to step forward. One of the things that we have been doing in the school district and part of our strategic planning is to have all fourth grade students, in addition to all fourth grade students, experience invention convention. So, invention convention is something that, again, sparks the creativity, the creative aspect of our schools, we don't want them just to sit in chairs and read books, and we want them to read books, of course, but we also want them to be creative and have opportunities to be creative, it's not enough just to say, "Go be creative," we have to offer kids opportunities with good teacher guidance, and we have those opportunities, I'm proud to say, and Mrs. Henkel's one of our leaders in the district to help us make sure that we do that, she is our STEM supervisor, among other things, and, Mrs. Henkel, would you please?
Thank you. I'm honored to be here this evening to recognize our invention convention winners in grades four through 10. As Dr. Clouette mentioned, invention convention is an internationally recognized competition, students become immersed in the engineering design process, they think creatively either to develop a new invention on the market or take a product that's already on the market and recreate it to improve it. As many of you know, this year, we had 373 grade four students participate in invention convention, this is the first time, as Dr. Clouette mentioned, that we've integrated through our strategic planning, one of our milestones is for all grade four students to be exposed to the invention process, and we now weave that into our curriculum so that they have exposure right in the classroom and have complete support from the schools and their teachers. When students transition to grades five through eight, it becomes an optional program. This year, we had 80 participants in grades five through eight, we had 14 regional qualifiers, 11 state qualifiers, and four national level winners. Having been a judge on most all of the review boards throughout the district, not only is it one of my favorite parts of the year, but I'm always so impressed with the creativity and the presentations that our students do. If anyone would put a little plug here, if anyone wants to participate in the review panel process, we encourage the community to get involved, we're always looking for more judges, and if you're interested, please shout out, send a shout out to me or the school buildings, and we'd love to have you. Lastly, tonight, because of the time, we're awarding all of the grade four winners at the five elementary schools, and we're also going to honor our national award winners in grades five through 10. So, each student, when I call your name, I'm going to ask you to come up and say your name, okay, your grade, the title of your presentation, the title of your invention, include a little brief statement about what it does and what problem it solves, okay? Alright, so our first inventor is Quinn Worley from Long Hill School, grade four, Mrs. Diuto, the principal of Long Hill, Quinn is not here, she's also, I believe, on vacation, yes? But, some of our inventors also recorded their pitch, if you think of Shark Tank, that is part of the invention process, is actually making a presentation and a pitch to the board members, so we have videos of some of the presenters, and you will get those tomorrow through email. So, her invention is called the Coat Keeper, here it is.
Mrs. Diuto was near line, excuse me.
I was just going to say that, yeah.
And so, her invention was actually a unique way of traveling and storing your coat when you're out and about, so you don't have to leave it hanging on a chair, or you don't have to hold it over your arms, so it's a coat keeper.
And her pitch really was, you know, every time they go away or they go to a museum, her mom's always stuck holding everybody's coats. So, her invention was to really kind of help her mom out with her and her brother, and you can see here the picture of it where it just rests on, and because it's made this way, once you're done using the Coat Keeper, you then can put it right into the pocket of the coat, so it's nothing more to carry around.
Very clever.
Yes, thank you.
You win.
Yes. We're going to display the prototypes and the presentations down in the main lobby, if anybody wants to get to see them, we can leave them right up there. From Booth Hill School, is your doctor Zavajanti here, too?
Yes.
Where is Reese Bartellus?
He's in the wall.
Anybody?
Reese.
Oh. Her invention is called... She's really serious. Yeah. Yeah. So, I'm... Yeah. My invention is a... It's a... I made this invention every time I soccer, it's very hard to get my soccer socks over my Moevee cigars, they hurt your hands and they're very tight, so I decided to make a zipper in my soccer sock, so I could easily just zip it up.
Very impressive. All right. (applause)
So, I've known Reese for the past two years at Booth Hill School, fabulous student, and I look forward, she's going to be doing great things for our students in fourth grade at the school, so congratulations.
(applause)
And Reese, didn't Reese, weren't you the one that took sewing lessons?
Yeah.
Yes, she took sewing lessons to work on that project, so, very cool, good job.
Yeah, that's a good invention, Reese, I played soccer myself, I wish I had it.
Sorry. And for a small investor, you can't. Moevee in School, Mrs. Santelli is here to honor Colin Zimes.
Jims.
Colin Jims.
Here, let me hold this for you, and you can perhaps explain it a little bit.
So, my invention is the mallow spinner, so whenever I go camping, I roast my marshmallow, but it doesn't get roasted all around, so I made this to solve a problem, I wanted it to be pressed down on its button, and the...
Cool.
Very good. That's great. That's great.
Colin is a student leader at Moevee in School, I know Mr. Sullivan is back there as well, and he leads our student leaders at Moevee in School, and he can speak very well, him as well, he takes on roles and initiatives, not just something like this at school, but also in any event or student function that we have going on, he's going to be great, Mr. Williams at Perry Hill, I'm very sad for him. He's a great inventor, both have patented, I know Mrs. Henkel wanted to take it home with her, she wants to end it, and you also told me that you have a slogan for it, what is it?
My slogan is, keep mellow and spin on.
Thank you very much.
Okay, from Sunnyside School, is Ryan Depetore here?
Make way for Ryan.
Yeah. So, I'm here to attract a rake.
Attract a rake.
And the problem that it solves is, so my dad has a hard time making pictures of flowers to his dad, so that's why I keep up this idea. Basically, all you do is squeeze this blue handle and it locks it.
Okay.
Awesome.
(applause)
And our last grade four invention convention winner, AJ Palmieri. From Elizabeth Chelsea. Hello, my name is AJ, and I went to the water pump, the problem I had is when I go swimming, I get ear infections, and the doctors said it was possible, and when I use the ear plug, sometimes they fall out, and I just have to hit my ears, so I decided to make something that covers my whole ears, so I named it the Water Pump, it's like the goggle for my ears, so instead of having to put, instead of having to put drops in, or instead of having to put water plugs in, I could just use this. We'll show us that works. So, you like to put it on, you put the goggle on, and if you see a view, you turn on the water.
(applause)
So, as I mentioned, when students transition to Perry Hill School, the invention convention project is voluntary, they can actually, next year, any of these students who want to take their initial invention and modify it and improve on it, they have the opportunity to do that. So, this evening, we have Mrs. Lorraine Williams and Angela Platoon, she's our enrichment specialist at Perry Hill School, and at this point, we're going to start transitioning our schedule next year for fourth grade to follow the same process that invention convention does, so that they can actually progress to the state qualifier, the state qualifiers, the regional, and then the national level. So, this year, we are recognizing our national award winners at Perry Hill School, we have Laura. Laura. You're in our house. Thank you. Come on up, Laura.
Hey, Laura.
(applause) I invented the magic park, which is an magnetic book park that shows you exactly where you're going to be.
I invented the magic park, which is an magnetic bookmark that shows you exactly where you've left off, because sometimes when you read, you lose your place, so it slides into wherever you want it to go. And it can flip around and falls around the book, so if you're at the bottom of the page, it can even go down there if you need it to.
I need this.
And to improve it, I would make it more applicable for people who have mental disorders such as dyslexia, and you can slide it around, so that way they can follow along with it.
So as Laura mentioned, as the inventions progress throughout the process, they do have the option of revising and taking feedback and improving at every level. Laura actually got to the national level and will be able to use her invention next year if she chooses to as well. Next is Luke Sandborn for his Base X invention. He actually received the patentability award from MP&amp;H Law Firm. Is Luke here? Do you wanna do a video?
I already speak too much, I say.
You guys, you look forward. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Luke Sandborn, and this is Base X. The purpose of Base X is to stop cups from getting knocked over. I came up with the idea of Base X when I was pouring milk into a paper cup. I realized I had to hold the paper cup so I didn't get knocked over. I also felt that I had to hold the milk jug with two hands so I didn't drop it. I created Base X to free up the second hand, so I can use both hands to hold the milk jug without worrying that the paper cup will get accidentally knocked over. Also, at our house, we have a lot of spills, so I wanted to create an invention that could stop cups from getting accidentally knocked over. This is Base X. Base X has an adjustable strap to fit small cups and large cups. To use Base X, take your cup, stick it into Base X, and then using the strap tightly secure it against the metal. Now, Base X is securely mounted to the cup, it's going nowhere. This is an objective tester. I built this to show you that Base X really works. I could test Base X by accidentally knocking into these two cups, but that would be subjective. I could apply a lot of force to this cup, and not a lot of force to the cup with Base X. With this tester, I can insert the same amount of force under both hands to show you that Base X really works. I'll bring this up to a ninety-degree angle and drop it. The cup without Base X will get knocked over by the tester every time. And now with Base X. Base X still stands strong. So I'm listening to my presentation, I hope Base X could someday help people from knocking over their cup. Thank you for supporting me for my trip to nationals. That was a great opportunity, and I had a great time.
Next, we have our two Shelton Intermediate School inventors who also progressed to the national level. Caitlin Burgers, is she here?
Yes, she is.
All right, so as you know, I'm Caitlin Burgers, and I'm seventh grader. I invented the Zip Fix. The Zip Fix is the quick fix for zips that slip. So the problem is that the zipper on your pants are constantly falling down and have a hard time staying up. So the solution is the Zip Fix, and this will quickly and easily hold up that zipper on any pair of pants, so you don't have to worry about it falling down. So it started with my mom talking to me about her favorite pair of jeans that the zipper wanted to stay up on. So I figured that there had to be a solution, right? So I did a lot of research, I looked online, but sure enough, there was no solutions. The only thing I found was a hack where you could use a key ring. But the key ring, this is not the purpose of it. The Zip Fix is a one-of-a-kind product made specifically for this reason. So as you can see, the Zip Fix includes an elastic, which can stretch over any size button on your pants. It also has a clip that can be easily opened and closed around the hole at the end of the zipper pole, because every zipper pole has a pull at the end of it. So once I had those two together, just the elastic and the clip, I realized that the clip was being too easily opened by the weight that was being put on from the zipper. So I minimized that weight to keep the clip more closed by adding the jump, and it also gave it a more finished look. So it cost me thirty-two cents to make each, and I sold them in packs at three for five ninety-nine. This can be used on men, women, and children for a false fall zipper, whether that's because your pants are too tight, and that can cause your zipper to fall down, or maybe it's broken.
Next, from Shelton Intermediate School, is Tyler Lofkis.
My name is Tyler Lofkis, and my invention is charge like the wind. What my invention does is use the wind generated by you driving your car to charge your phone. What you do is you hook this onto your window, you would hook this onto the driver's side, close your window to hold it, hold it in, and then as you're driving, the wind that it generates is blown through this cone, focused it onto a DC motor with a fan attached that's inside. The electricity that is generated from spinning that DC motor is then sent to this battery pack, which has two rechargeable batteries in it. And those can be, and the electricity from those batteries is then sent to your phone. You can decide whether you want to turn it on and off by just doing this, flipping this And it'll either charge your phone and take the electricity from the battery, or it will just charge the battery, depending on whether you have the switch on or off. Thank you for supporting me, all of you, on my way to nationals. Thank you.
So as you can see, the invention process requires a lot of research. It requires a lot of investigation around materials as well as cost analysis. After eighth grade, although the option to participate in invention convention is not available, students have the ability to take their invention and go further if they choose to. This year, we had a tenth grade student take their invention, revise it, update it, and actually have a mentor outside of school, one of our own teachers outside of school, to modify the invention and recompete for a patent. He received the Acordia Scientific Excellence Award for his invention, as well as a thousand-dollar award at the 2018 National Invention Convention and Entrepreneurship Expo. This is Kyle Young. Kyle's, John, do you, because.
I'm here.
No, okay. Kyle's invention was the fire hydrant alert system. And basically, he created a sensor that attaches to a fire hydrant, so it detects whether or not there is an object near the fire hydrant and alerts authorities like emergency medical as well as the police to come and remove any of the objects around the fire hydrant. You will get a video about his pitch in the email tomorrow, okay? So can we have a round of applause for Kyle?
Thank you, Mrs. Henkel, for your leadership, and thank you to all of the teachers that have supported the students, and their principals who have supported the students, and the parents. We know that you play a big role in supporting the students, we really appreciate it. I hope you can all see that we take very seriously creativity and building things and the entrepreneurial spirit here in Shelton, and thank you, kids, for your such great inventions. We know there's a big future ahead for all of you. Thank you.
Finally, in our presentation portion of the meeting tonight, we want to recognize our Teacher of the Year. Every year, we have a committee of professionals that make the very hard decision of finding which of the many excellent teachers we have will be recognized as the Teacher of the Year. This year, from SIS, Penny Zatomi, was recognized. I was able to have the joy of surprising her in her classroom full of her students and announce the award to her, and her students gave her a raucous round of applause, and she turned red as Ray Shooks. Anyway, it was really delightful. She's a very delightful and committed teacher, and I know that many of the teachers are not able to be here tonight because they had scheduled vacations thinking we were gonna get out of school much earlier. But can we have a big round of applause? Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before we move on to anything else, I just want to mention, I have a feeling we're gonna see a lot of these things that we saw earlier tonight on infomercials on late-night television.
For Shark Tank.
Yes, and you know, put me down for the Marshmallow Turner. You know, I will point out that the girl who did Zip Fix, she was bribing the judges by giving away free samples. And I got one, which I gave to my wife. It was a cool invention, and they were all terrific, and thank you so much for being here. Okay, next item on our agenda is public hearing. We allow up to five minutes for each speaker, according to Board Policy 9325 as a reminder. No board of education employee, student, or community member should be defamed within public comment. Would anybody care to address the board?
Yes.
Okay, well, come forward. If you would, please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Barbara Jalosik, and I live at 216 Nichols Avenue. I've been a food service worker for nineteen years now. I am here today in a very difficult way, and the first time in over thirty as a single parent. After the loss of my husband last December, my PTO time is what keeps my family with a roof over their head and food on the table. Every penny goes into our family income, and I cannot afford to lose anymore. I have lost enough, so I'm asking you to please think about that when you make your decisions. Thank you.
My name is Jeanette Schiffer, I live at 22 Molnar Drive in Shelton. I've been a lunch lady for fifteen years. I have a husband and three children, two of which are in college. That being said, the Board of Education said when contracting with Witsins, we requested that we keep our job, we keep our pay, provide comparable and affordable health insurance. Yes, we kept our jobs, and yes, we kept our pay scale, but the insurance was another story. Witsins forced us to give up our Unite Here Health Insurance to go with their plan, which was more expensive, a higher deductible, and the cost to employees was more money. Over the five-month period, the insurance that I had to pay for, I paid out over eleven thousand dollars in medical costs, not counting my contribution to the shared cost of the insurance. I was forced to make tuition payments late so that I could be able to afford the chemotherapy medicine needed for my husband to help fight his brain cancer. With a lot of fighting with the company, we were able to save the company a considerable amount of money on the health insurance costs. With the loss of PTO days has made it even harder to be able to pay for my health insurance. I was forced to use my PTO days for school closings and the holiday breaks just so I had enough money in my paycheck to pay my portion of the insurance. Some ladies didn't get a paycheck at all, because the whole thing that they made for that week went to paying their family portion. I had to go to work being sick or not get paid because of the loss of PTO days. And closing, I would like to say the cafeteria workers should not be forgotten, because we are the ones who service the children of Shelton with a smile on a daily basis. We're here to stay, and we're gonna fight.
I live at 36 Anna Street here in Shelton. And those are just a couple of the stories from forty-four women. So I want to bring a little clarity to the table, because we feel that there's been, we have not been unreasonable in negotiations. We've come to the table, we have made compromises in order to be competitive and to save money for the system. I want you to know that we're not asking for forty-five days of PTO time. And PTO time, like it's been mentioned, it's not a luxury. We're not taking vacation with that, it's income security for these women. And so we're not asking for forty-five, we're asking for thirty-four. Out of those thirty-four days, that does not apply to everyone in our bargaining unit, because some of those days are earned based on years of service. We've also, this year, we're working without a contract, but we've taken a wage freeze for the first year to save the company money. We agreed to a phase-in over a few years for new hires. And the insurance that was spoke about by Jeanette, we offered that, we presented that to the company, and therefore, when it saved them money, they were willing to take that insurance from the women. So the last thing I want to note on is that the bid that was given for labor by Witsins to the Board of Ed is, it's right in line with the current offer. The numbers are there, it's been presented to Witsins, and we have asked them to explain the numbers, because they refused to speak about it. They're not going to, they say they don't have to, and they have stated to us that they're not going to set a precedent. So it's, you know, their negotiating is based on principle, their principle. And you know what? We've been more than willing to do what's best for Shelton and our students, we've negotiated in good health, we're not being unreasonable, and unfortunately, the company that we are being forced to negotiate with is very unreasonable.
Hi, my name is Carol Moriari, and I know you've seen me before, and I just wanted to say that now that you have heard the truth, I think you should table the vote.
And your address?
Until we settle a fair contract. We have negotiations coming up on Monday, and we are ready to settle. We use our PTO time to get through snow days and shutdowns. We understand you don't get involved in negotiation, but it's time to do the right thing. Also, Witsins was voted out of East Haven, and Branford chose Chartwheels to stay there instead of bringing Witsins in. So please, think about us when you make your vote, okay? Thank you.
Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Yes.
Hi, I am the proud parent of one graduate and one third-year junior at Educational Center for the Arts, both from the writing department. My oldest just finished her first year of college with a 4.0 majoring in writing and illustration at Leslie University in Cambridge. While at ECA, she received fifteen assorted silver and gold key awards from Scholastic for her writing in various genres. She was one of five American Voice finalists, she won a national gold medal, and she was a finalist in the Sunken Gardens Poetry Contest, all because of Educational Center for the Arts. My other daughter also won numerous awards and has just finished her sophomore year at Shelton Anna DCA. I don't think there's one of you here that knows anything about Educational Center for the Arts. Well, let me tell you, it is a halftime magnet school in New Haven specializing in the arts, visual, theater, music, voice, dance, and writing. There are three hundred students from thirty, yes, thirty districts. It's extremely competitive to get in. These are some of the most talented and gifted kids I've ever seen, and it would be a travesty to take this away when you are taking away their transportation. My children's lives wouldn't be the same without Educational Center for the Arts. This is not a public high school filled with kids who are there because they have to be. Every one of these kids fought to get into Educational Center for the Arts. Every one of these kids wants to get into Educational Center for the Arts because they are not only passionate about what they do, but they are extremely gifted. We, as parents, are not asking for a full-size school bus to transport them. A van would suffice. A state grant, anything that would help us, would help them, and that's all we are asking. Our children's education and their futures depend on it. I could go on and on about the benefits of Educational Center for the Arts and how hard, working, and talented these kids are. Please, please, help us help our kids. And I also have a letter that my daughter wrote. Next year, I will be a junior at Shelton High. This will also be my third year at Educational Center for the Arts. Usually, when I tell people I go there, I get asked the same question: What's ECA? I tell people that ECA is a fine arts magnet school in New Haven. I tell people I go there for writing. I tell people that I take English, math, science, and history at Shelton, then take a bus to New Haven around 12 o'clock. Here's what I do not tell them. I'm not a very brave person. I tend to be quiet, and even when I'm talked to, I don't respond much. When teachers give us partner work with someone I've never talked to, I panic. Being forced to talk to people does not help me make friends. I find it difficult to find common ground with someone. At Educational Center for the Arts, I am among other writers. I know right off the bat that we have something to talk about. Of course, I still have some difficulty making friends, but when I'm around like-minded people, it becomes so much easier. I can't even begin to explain how much Educational Center for the Arts has improved my social life and my confidence. Prior to high school, public speaking was a nightmare. When it came to sharing my writing, it was even worse. Admittedly, I cried the very first time I had to read my poem to the writing workshop. Looking back, I've changed so much since then, and I know this is because of the Educational Center for the Arts. I've developed the confidence to share my work and present, and this confidence has transferred over to Shelton. My presentation skills with projects has improved significantly, and sometimes, I even enjoy it. And most importantly, I've become a better writer. Sometimes, I'll look back at what I wrote in eighth grade and think, did I really write this? It's almost unbelievable how much I feel myself improving. I know this wouldn't have been possible if I never attended Educational Center for the Arts. These are just a few things that the school has done for me. It has made me more independent. It has improved my time management skills, and it helped me realize that I want to write for a living. If I couldn't go to Educational Center for the Arts just because there was no bus to take me and no way for me to get there, I know I'd lose everything: confidence, friends, and I certainly wouldn't improve my writing at the pace that I currently am. I know my fellow Shelton/ECA friends feel the same way. I know ECA has helped them too. I want you to take a look at this deeper-than-face value. You're not just taking away our bus, you're taking away our friends and our experiences. Thank you.
Would anybody else care to address the board? Yes.
So first off, I want to thank you for choosing Mrs. Toney as the Teacher of the Year. She's amazing. She's my younger daughter's teacher, and I'm glad that I'm not the only one, and she's not the only one that thinks she's the best teacher ever. So she is. Secondly, I want to thank you for continuing your commitment to the School of Innovation. The program's been a huge success in my eyes, and I'm glad that my younger daughter will have the opportunity to continue in the program next year and hopefully up through high school. She's really learned so much and just wakes up, is ready to go to school, eager to go to school. It's an amazing program. Unfortunately, my older daughter is also an ECA student and has not fared as well. I would just like to reiterate how crucial the arts programs are for our children. You all were just lauding the creativity of the kids that were up here, and so creative, amazing, the things they came up with. Science-based, but arts are another way to express creativity that we feel is just as important. My daughter aspires to be a writer and editor. The writing program at ECA is excellent and exactly what she needs to achieve that goal. Shelton High offers nothing comparable. She's committed to this program and planning to have these ECA grades and achievement on her high school transcript for acceptance into college. I understand the expense to transport a handful of students to magnet schools was high, and cutting it would affect relatively few students. But the cost they will pay personally will be immeasurable if they can no longer attend these programs. I asked the BOE to please partner, got to make a bigger candidacy, with the magnet school parents to find an alternate resource for transportation to the arts magnet schools. There are options, but we need you to help try and implement them. We'll be reaching out to you in the near future and hope we can count on your cooperation. Thank you.
My name is Ken Haydocky. I live 24 Golden Hill Lane in Shelton. I'm a father of two daughters in the Shelton school system, a future seventh grader and a freshman in high school. My daughter Carly, just like some of the stories, has always been creative. She's a singer. She's been in all the choirs throughout her time in Shelton and all the school systems. She applied for four schools in high school, and one was Shelton High. She got into all of them and, you know, really thought long and hard with us about whether she wanted to go to the agriculture school or whether she wanted to go to the school, ECA, in New Haven. She chose ECA because she loved the people. She just liked walking in there, and, you know, it's her favorite part of her day. She's continued to grow in her music. She's sung the "God Bless America" at the Britten Bees and did a phenomenal job, and she's, you know, she goes to Berkeley College and different things, NYU, and that program things she would never be able to do with Shelton High. And she wants to do this for her life. She wants to go to those kind of things. So, you know, I'm just employing on everyone in the Board of Ed to look at creative solutions so that, you know, these things are valued. They are. They're just as important as technology. I work at Yale, and there's people in drama, there's people in science, there's people all excellent in their fields. And I think it's important that the Board of Ed, and even the state of Connecticut, which I'll talk about in the future, prioritize the art schools just as much as technology schools. So, thank you.
Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Sensing none, we'll move on. Actually, we could allow for a very brief break in case anybody would care to leave, possibly students or people who came here to speak. If you'd like to sneak out and not enjoy the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to. Otherwise, you're welcome to stay and enjoy the meeting.
Yeah, I do feel like I have a feeling for all meetings, so whatever, whatever's there. I'll probably have a cold pick. I don't know. You got something?
I don't know. There's no picture.
I'll drive it.
Cliff Lamb.
Let me know when you come back.
No, I'm trying to get it.
I'm sure you could thank them.
It's terrible.
It's terrible.
It's terrible.
I don't know if you saw, they keep them from there.
I don't know.
Certainly.
I don't know.
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 The minimum of the sixty days. Doubt it that we can drop for today now and have.
Because, um, from talking to people, I heard they're very close. They're not that smart on benefits. And you know what it is? Most of these days are shared.
Oh, yeah.
Because Sheldon, we're a well-to-do community. We can do better. So, and this company has, this company has a shield track.
Okay.
They, uh, they've got two towns where everybody, the last table has been kicked down. Yeah. And, uh, those people, I mean, they're, see the numbers they have. Yeah, so, especially in healthcare, I think that they're getting healthcare now. It's not as good as the country had. They're trying to even cut ours at the city bridge. They want us to go to the state. But that, when we have signal now, that plan is that it has a lot of mental issue. You don't utilize it because it costs you. So like if you don't go to the dentist twice, you've got a big problem. You'll be a check up. And a lot of people have that kind of time. And, and they have like, like our plan with the city is ER business is second. That's going to two fifty. But you admit it, you're waiting. So you kind of, if you go there, you gotta, you gotta say, I gotta stay here.
Yeah.
Two fifty. Yeah. If you're really willing.
No problem.
Yeah, you can. So, so that two fifty is a good price.
That's music, I guess. Money's going there.
They have A, A, get blocked. Wait till eight o'clock.
You've got a daughter or something.
Yes. They always have fifty. I don't know, they were sitting there always in the doctor. Being away with the doctor all the time. But I had two. I was just. That's why I hope this, uh, you should just have some. We all need the same, like yourself, like a master plan from every twelve.
Yeah.
So can you save for the chair? Get your. Okay. Here one way. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm the, I'm the, I'm the. I'm gonna ask the CEA for some cash.
Uh, got a little smaller than that.
The jacket and this.
On the positive thing though, even though it's not a. I mean, you know. You should give it, you should give it. And tell my brothers.
Okay, thirty second warning.
She doesn't believe in that.
Then we don't have superintendent.
Stay for ten minutes and leave.
Okay. Alrighty. Let's reconvene. Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. And in our packets, we had the minutes for the regular meeting of May twenty-third. Also, the special meetings of June sixth and June twelfth.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept all three.
Second.
Motion made in second. Is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Communications to the board, which were attached. We had a very nice thank you from Jennifer Keen for the Innovative Teacher Award. And a thank you from the parents of Laura Unowski for the National Intervention Convention, attendance, which was a terrific thing. Okay. Let's see, moving right along. Okay, superintendents' reports and action items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just have a brief report tonight. I just want to let, um, the board and the community know that we have been, as a school district, recognized once again by United Way. The Shelton Public Schools, uh, were presented by the Valley, Valley United Way with an award for Top Dollars Raised. And so I will just pass this around to the board members and see if we can pass it down. And we were also recognized as the Employee Giving Award. We have a high percentage of our employees, even in difficult times, that give money to United Way. Many, many of you who have served in the district before are well aware of it and did it, and, and, and I'm part of, I'm proud to be part of it as well. But, uh, it says a lot about the spirit of generosity of, of our teachers and administrators and other staff. So we appreciate that. Thank you, United Way. The, um, I, I do have a transportation update, but I believe we'll be discussing that later in the meeting. I spent some time this afternoon at the courthouse in Milford. Um, the city of Shelton has filed a, uh, has filed a lawsuit against the school district regarding transportation, and that is something we will discuss in executive session later on. Also, I'd like to acknowledge the, the mini grant awards given by the Shelton Educational Endowment Fund, SEITH. Uh, they've given out mini award grants this year to Tina Taylor, Marlo Morastro Rogerio, and Van Stamsky at Mohegan School for their project geeking out in history. Grants were given to Melissa Fenstermaker, Courtney Dishian, Jamie Dreszec, Brian Sharkey, and Kate Coe and Deborah Tucker at Perry Hill School for their sped collaboration grant. They do a lot of really great work with special education collaboration. Also, in the area of art and STEM, Teresa Manis at Long Hill School was given an award, grant I should say. Also, Kevla Blank Makerspace was awarded, uh, recognized and funded for Jom Tishi, uh, our library media specialist at Mohegan School. Uh, also, the Little Free Library, um, a project invented by Amy Corus and Ron Gaitis at the Shelton Intermediate School also received a grant. And finally, last but not least, Personal Narratives in English Language Arts and Social Studies was an award given to, a grant award given to Kelly Guera and Caitlin Botzberg-Tucker at Shelton Intermediate School. Can we please have a round of applause for all of those individuals? Anyone interested? We are very interested in growing and expanding, I should say, SEITH, the Education Endowment Fund, uh, so we can give out more mini grants. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, just to add to that, um, I've talked, I've spoken with Lorraine and Kathy Riddle, and we're going to research a committee of many. And we were, um, we're going to have a raffle at the beginning of the year. There's going to be about ten to twelve prizes. And then, um, I have a group of retired teachers that have offered to come in, and we're going to raffle off a duty-free week in the elementary schools, and they will do a duty for them. If they have three days a week or five days a week or whatever. And we're going to put buckets in, and hopefully that's good. Isn't that cool? I think, I think we'll make a lot of money on that one. So that we're going to, I asked Lorraine if we could talk, if we can start it off at the kickoff in, uh, at the convocation, so. Okay?
And finally, do you want to give an update on the international students from China, potential project that we've talked about? Mr. Zhang, if you can give us a wave, he's here. Thank you, Mr. Zhang, for being present. Thank you, can step forward if you'd like. Just wanted to let you know that there are a number of schools in the United States and some in Connecticut that welcome, um, international students into the district. Now, this program that we would like to start on a small scale, uh, maybe with four or five students, would include, um, families being hosts, so families would have to volunteer to be hosts. There is some small compensation for it, but it's mainly out of a spirit of wanting to give and support international students. Places like the Gilbert School, um, they actually have dozens of students, um, who are tuition-paying students, and it's part of their, their model. That would not be the case in Shelton, but the students that would come as part of this program would pay tuition directly to the Shelton Public Schools. I think it's a worthwhile project, and I, I'd like to try it on a very small scale and see how it goes next year.
Have we had any discussions with, with our attorneys about the liability issues about the school district being involved in this? You know, the program is worthwhile, uh, but there is some liability, some screening of families that might be hosting, there's liability there, and it might be better done by a separate agency as opposed to the Board of Education.
Um, I have talked to, um, one of our two attorneys in depth about this. Um, I would add that, um, the, um, any contract, if we were, if we were enter, enter into a, a contract with Mr. Zhang to help facilitate this, would include those things, and they would be vetted by our attorneys before I asked you to vote on it. I, I would bring the contract to you before there's a final vote, but before it comes to you, it would be vetted by our attorneys.
And this kind of thing does happen in other districts all the time, so.
Well, if there's a model, but, but, but there is liability associated with it, because we have kids that are going to be in our trust, and we want to make sure that the families that are hosting them have been vetted, and they're, they're, you know, and all those kinds of things, and, and, you know, I think it's, you know, if there's models that, that have already up there that we can certainly adapt.
Absolutely. That, that would be part of the, the vetting process, absolutely. And I would bring it back to you for, um, final consideration. But I know if we're going to try it for next year, we would need to get started sometime later in the summer so that students could possibly come for January. Mr. Zhang.
Come in the wintertime, perfect.
Well, there's winter in China.
Well, I know there is, but there is.
But, um, Mr. Zhang, um, tonight's meeting, as you can see, has been, um, uh, it's, it's a long meeting, but if you would like to make a brief comment, we'd love to hear from you, and we thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for giving me another opportunity. And, uh, I did research based on the instruction from Dr., I always call her Dr. Chris. I, I think, uh, I don't know either you have the copies or not, and, uh, in Massachusetts, from West Coast, Washington State, from East Coast, Maine, and Massachusetts, Rhode Island, New York State, all those states, the public schools host international students. And, uh, for, I think mainly is for academic performance, another one for the economic issues. I think we have this one. And if we bring international students, we can help the state and the city to have actual cash flow inside the budget to help not only the school and also have some people in this room. Uh, I think this is a model, and, uh, that's Mr. David, and you mentioned the liability. I think that's, uh, very, we have very successful models, and to do that, and we also communicate with other public schools, try to work with them, and I think Dr. Chris is very, very cautious and careful about this one. Every time when we talk, he, he give me extra homework to do research and try to improve the process, and I, I don't know either, I give him credit, I, I'm trying to criticize him. Uh, but anyway, I think we will work together, I think in Connecticut, and we can be the pioneer in the education. Tonight, I was very excited when I saw so young kids in the grade four, grade five, six, to the tenth. They got the award from national level, from state level. This is a wonderful, wonderful district. We need to bring more students, bring new blood to make this society energetic and revitalize the economy, culture, and everything to lead in Connecticut, to lead in the country.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zhang.
Want, do I have a question for the superintendents?
Okay.
Similar?
Yeah.
All right. If you have a problem.
Yeah, Chris, um, last month, uh, we passed a motion, um, requesting a fall analysis dealing with the weapon that was brought into the high school.
Yes.
Um, and I'm not expecting a report tonight. However, uh, I would like a date when we're going to see that report, especially if there's going to be recommendations, so that we can implement them, and given that we're not scheduled to have a July meeting, I'm not sure if getting it in August will give us enough time to implement any recommendations that might come out of it. Can you give us an update?
Um, I can, we have been, I, I believe that when we last spoke about this, we had agreed that, um, August would be a time to receive it, that's how I understood it. How about the first week? We're, we're going to have two meetings in August.
Right.
And the earlier of the two could be the one where we deliver that to you. We've been working on it.
Okay.
Um, with, 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 um, input both from high school administration, with our security staff, and working with the police department. So it'll, it'll be a comprehensive, uh, report.
Okay, so then we'll have it in, in our August, early for August, so.
Earlier of the two meetings.
So that if there is, Rex, we, we can implement them. Thank you.
Alrighty. Okay. We have information.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Zhang. Thank you.
Maybe it's a comfortable chair. In any case, uh, okay, and in our packets, we have information on approved field trips for our information, including a Spanish trip to Peru and a trip to Washington, DC. Board action items, items presented for a vote, consideration of the board to approve bylaw ninety-three twenty-seven point one, Board of Education, social media, and appendix, which is attached.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded, is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item two, consideration of the board to approve a grant proposal for Valley Regional Adult Education Workforce Readiness Project, ESL, which is attached.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, is there any discussion?
One quick question.
Sure, Dr. Ritter.
At the top, it asks for forty thousand federal funds and then cost per student two thousand. So my question is, do the students pay that in addition to the forty thousand?
Can you point to which one you're? Yeah, what number, what number is it?
It's on the priority at the top, following a bold, bold, uh, print.
I'm sorry, what, on the, of the budget of the board action items, which number is it?
Appendix B, it's in there in our packet.
Yeah, okay. It's, it's, I'm, for some reason, it's out of order. Um, in any event, um, I'm not sure I understand the answer to your question, this, the, um, I, I would have to research exactly what the education.
Well, it says that the grant is for forty thousand.
Correct.
Which is fine. And then, um, the second part.
Grant proposal, as you.
Right. And then cost per student, two thousand. So my question was, do they pay two thousand each in addition to the forty thousand?
Yeah, twenty students, the two thousand dollars, uh, the cost is two thousand dollars per student, that, that's what adds up to forty.
So we're requesting the full amount of the cost.
If, I hope we get it, of course.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No questions.
Okay. Uh, sensing we are ready to vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consideration of the board to approve on behalf of Mohegan School, a donation of six thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-four cents from the Stop and Shop Rewards Program to be used in direct service to Mohegan students.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consideration of the board to approve on behalf of Mohegan School, a donation of fourteen hundred and seven dollars from Robert Taylor Photography to be used in direct service to Mohegan students.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, question.
It says, it's a commission. That's how it's described. Is this, uh, have we selected somebody who then gives us a commission because we selected them, or does this, uh, the photographic service go out to competitive bid?
Right. It's right here on the bottom of the check.
Yeah, I believe it has not traditionally gone out to competitive bid, um, and that each school has had a relationship with different, um, photographers over the years.
So we're picking photographers based on the fact that they're going to give us a commission back?
Uh, but I, I wouldn't phrase it that way, I understand why you are, but, um, but I don't think that's the basis. I think quality of service and, and, and the relationship with parents and the, and the quality is basically.
And the quality of the picture.
We could move it as a district to have one, some districts have a single photographer. Most parents, when I have brought that up, are very unhappy with that idea, because they have a, a more of a personal relationship between the photographer and the school.
Well, I understand that, but getting a commission back certainly gives the impression that the photographer is buying service.
All of them are. All the companies that come in to take the pictures.
Then, then why don't they just lower the prices for, for their parents and keep their money?
A lot of, a lot of things that come through the schools, that these sort of decisions that are made through the schools, when they, when the proposal is made, it's like, we'll do the photography for a certain price, and in addition, you can get back two percent of whatever is made. It's usually done in that way regardless of the service, whether it's photography or, you know, somebody bringing a, uh, you know, another service into the school.
I think maybe the parents might rather get, uh, save the two percent, or three percent, or whatever it is.
The money is going to the school, so it benefits their children either way.
And a lot of them don't buy the pictures either. They have, they have, the picture is taken, and they have the option to buy it or not.
Right, but, but the commission that they get back is based on what they sell to school.
I understand, yes.
So. Yeah. It seemed to me that, that, that we should do it as a competitive bid.
Any other discussion?
Maybe we could discuss that in, in one of our finances or something.
That could be discussed in finance. Meanwhile, I think we should vote on the item on the agenda.
On the check.
Sensing we are ready to vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Absame.
Motion carries. Okay. Consideration of the board to approve on behalf of Sunnyside School, a check for four thousand two hundred and thirty dollars from Cass Foundation Incorporated, which is attached. Somebody care to make that motion? Motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded, is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of the board to approve of the request of Long Hill School PTO to conduct fundraising activities in two thousand eighteen nineteen school year.
You, you skipped number six.
Number six.
Yeah. Number six.
Sorry. Okay, sorry. Okay, consideration of the board to approve on behalf of Shelton High School, a fifteen hundred dollar Cass Planigan grant to start an ambassador program at Shelton High School in conjunction with the Shelton High School PTSO, which is attached.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we'll go back to the.
Number seven.
Number seven, consideration of the board to approve the request of Long Hill School PTO to conduct fundraising activities in the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, consideration of the board to accept on behalf of Booth Hill School, a donation of eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars from the Booth Hill School PTO to replace thirty Chromebooks and two iPads.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion?
One quick question, is this in compliance with all of our new equipment?
Yes.
Yes, this is under review by IT.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, consideration of the board to approve continuing participation in Connecticut's Healthy Food Certification for the school year two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number ten, consideration of the board to accept on behalf of Booth Hill School, a donation of six hundred and seven dollars and seventy-six cents from the Stop and Shop Rewards Program, and eight hundred and ninety-five dollars from Robert Taylor Photography to be used in direct service to Booth Hill students.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of the board to approve the request of the Shelton High School Goal Club to conduct fundraising activities for the two thousand eighteen twenty nineteen school year to benefit the Shelton High School Boys Soccer Program.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I just ask, have the minutes reflect the entire motion of item nine?
Yes, um. Hopefully you won't require me to read it.
No, 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 I'm just saying, you're taking your intention, and everything I followed out, so that can go into the minutes.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I know that's a state requirement.
Yes, it is.
So, okay. Comments by the board chair. Graduation last week was pretty amazing. We had the fire department, the police department, we had the EMTs, we had people from Parks and Rec, we had our security guards, we had John Calhoun, we had a whole host of people who were working together for the benefit of the students, so that our recognition of their years at Shelton High School could be handled appropriately in spite of the fact that it was on a construction site. And the result was, I think, beautiful. In contrast, today, we didn't have people working together. We had the city deciding to file a suit against the Board of Education over the transportation contract. I think that's a shame. On a more positive note, pretty soon you're going to start to hear about the planet Mars. Some of you might remember in two thousand three, they were talking about, this is the time to see Mars, it's not going to be this close again for sixty thousand years. Well, it's going to be about five hundred miles farther away this summer, which is kind of like being ten feet closer to New York City. So, we're going to have a number of opportunities at my Astronomical Society for observing Mars starting on the nineteenth through the twenty-seventh. And also, we're going to arrange to do a Mars observing night, probably at Shelton Intermediate School, weather depending on August second. And that'll be something that'll be free, that you can show up for, bring the kids, and we'll have some really high-quality telescopes, and we'll give you some incredible views of Mars, that'll be better than you'll be able to see again until the year two thousand thirty-five. Okay. Moving on, reports of standing committees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Teaching and Learning met on Tuesday, June twelfth, at four o'clock here in central office. We had two presentations, one was the Curriculum Status Report, Summer Professional Learning Revision Schedule by Tina Henkel. Tina reported that there were, will be no set curriculum revision during the summer of two thousand eighteen due to budgetary constraints. One full day of professional learning in August will be dedicated to grade level and department curriculum discussion. Tina discussed soliciting the use of an extritional platform called Defined STEM, which focuses on performance-based tasks as well as career-focused objectives within the structure of online offerings. Some of the PPTs have been piloted on multiple grade levels and have received positive feedback and are, and are continuing to explore this type of platform to provide resources for classroom teachers. Besides Shelton, Defined STEM is currently being used in Greenwich, Stanford, Norwich, and Nagatac. Then Ken Serenich gave a school of innovation update outlining the mission and objectives, such as, you know, the four Cs of Twenty First Century Schools, professional, personalized learning, flexible scheduling, interdisciplinary learning, um, project inquiry-based learning and so forth, and what's next for the school of innovation. Defined pathways of instruction, expanding into eighth grade, and expanding sped services. And, um, they also shared testimonials from parents expressing their, um, you know, how wonderful it's been, and certainly students have been extremely, have had very positive experiences with the program. The next teaching and learning meeting date is scheduled for Monday, July sixteenth, at four o'clock at central office in room two oh one, and just note that this is a different date than on our original calendars. And it's, uh, ju, uh, Monday, July sixteenth. And as of right now, it's to be determined.
Thank you. Policy committee.
Did you skip finance?
Skip finance?
Oh, sorry. Never mind, I'm, I'm used to doing teaching and learning, then policy, then finance. But, no, we'll do finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The regular meeting of the Finance Committee met on Wednesday, June twentieth, two thousand eighteen. Ed Drapp, our Finance Director, gave a comprehensive financial report, including financial updates and highlights. He stated that the finances are in good shape, and as closing out, uh, we will be closing out the accounts with no problem. John Calhoun also gave a comprehensive report and update on all facilities projects. Included in his report were his continued goals and objectives. At this time, it is recommended by the Finance Committee for consideration of the board to renew the food service management contract for the 2018-2019 school year.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I am still disturbed that there is no contract with the union. It's been a year. Negotiations have dragged on, I'm not sure who's dragged them on, but it's, I don't know if that's even relevant anymore. But, you know, it's just unfortunate that we're, again, seem to be always put in a position of having to make decisions that are difficult, and that there are winners and losers. We do that with the budget, we did it over the buses, and now we're being asked to do it again. It would be wonderful if we could postpone this vote till after they have their meeting on the 2nd of July. However, given the email that Ed shared with us, and the concerns from the State Department of Education, it's pretty much a decision, we either have, we either sign the contract and we guarantee the kids have food next year, or we don't sign the contract and we're sitting in violation of state requirements. I'm very torn on how to vote, and I don't know how, I know that some others on the board are probably just as well torn, so those are my thoughts and comments.
And I'll just sort of echo what you're saying. I mean, this has been tough, as you guys know, the last time we voted on this, the motion failed, and I abstained, really because of exactly what Dave just put voice to, on that same reasoning. It's my understanding that the negotiations are entering their final stage.
Right.
There's been ample time. My heart goes out to all of you who spoke tonight.
Thank you.
When, when, when our independent personal lives are complicated by the things that are going on at work, and just the fact that healthcare in this country in general is in a really tenuous state, the fact that, that as employers, you know, the general consensus is moving to these high deductible, high out-of-pocket plans, and it, as, as you spoke to tonight, it creates a lot of hardship for those who are, who are affected by the things that we can't control. My heart really goes out to all of you. We do have an obligation to our community, to our students, to our schools, to make sure that they, we have a contract in place, to make sure that their needs are taken care of when it comes to food service. I would like to ask our superintendent what the consequence would be if we did not vote tonight on moving forward with the Whitsons contract.
Yeah, unfortunately, and you've related some of these things in your comments, there's parallel tracks here. There's the, there's, there's Whitsons and their negotiations with the union, which I do believe are entering into a final phase. And separate from that, on a parallel track, are the state requirements for us to have, and this is the key, a state-approved food services contract. And that has to happen before the end of the fiscal year, so that in the new fiscal year, we have a contract. So we'd be out of compliance and would potentially be in a situation where we'd have to go out to bid. And, and in order to, and again, and going out to bid, which sounds easy, I know those of you who have been part of bid processes before here know it's not easy, but in, in, in order to go out to bid, it also would require then a review, if we had a new bidder, for instance, a new contractor, they, the state would have to review it, and that could take up to 90 days, I believe, the email you received.
Sixty.
So it would, sixty, okay. But, but in any event, it could put us in a situation where we could possibly have no or less than quality food services. I, I am hopeful that the parallel between these two things can, don't intersect with each other, and that you will vote to approve a one-year extension, and that the union and the company will negotiate together to come up with a fair solution.
And just for clarification, how much did the BOE give to our last contractor, to Sedexo, when...
We were approximately subsidizing the former provider with up to $200,000 a year. And that is money that we just don't have. And my, and my, my advice to the board is that we just don't have that kind of extra money. In fact, we're, we're in a deficit hole.
Already making ugly cuts.
Did, did we, did we get a, a final tally from Whitsons as to how they, how they made out this year? I mean, I, I...
Well, you're guaranteed a profit, so you will get your $14,000.
I know, but how did they do? I mean, we got, we didn't receive any reports. I, I, well, I don't, I'm not, I shouldn't speak for everybody. I didn't receive any reports, and I just want to know how they, I mean, I was on that committee to choose. All right, and, and I have to apologize because I went into it, and we, we reviewed binders, and when I'm telling you binders, it was very, it was very stressful. And it was a very difficult time because we had to try to arrange visiting these places. And my concern, as was Mr. Scaritz, and I think the other two people that were with us, we, we wanted every, all the workers to have a job, and we wanted them to have benefits. Unfortunately, I didn't have the foresight to say what kind of benefits, and I apologize for that. But I do feel very badly, and, and I just, I just like to know what happened with, I mean, where is with, what have they done? How much have they made, how much haven't they made? $14,000, I, if I add up all of the ones that said they lost so much, that's more than $14,000, so...
Well, again, that's your contract. The contract called for you to get a guaranteed $14,000. And in the May Finance Committee meeting, we did share the financial projections for the end of the year, which was projected at a loss of about $59,000. I think that will be less than that, but we're still closing out June. We'll still have the June grant money coming in, so we anticipate a small loss somewhere between, again, we think it'll be less than the 59 that we projected back in May, but there is a projected small loss, much smaller than what you had with Whitsons.
Okay.
Sedexo.
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 I have a question I'd like to ask. Is there a possibility of us applying to the state and saying, "We need one more day," an extension, a mini-extension, just to get this last conversation done and over with? I mean, we've had lots of snow days, everything has been put aside, you know? I mean, let's give them the one day. One day.
So, it, it, today is the 27th of June. We would have to start asking that question on the 28th of June. And if the answer is no...
Then we meet again.
Well, when, okay, so, so that would be Thursday and Friday are the two available days.
Right. But aren't we allowed to do electronic voting?
Right.
Couldn't we do it in a conference call as opposed to gathering the entire meeting?
Right.
We would still have to have a meeting, people could participate electronically. I would need to be one of them, because I'm out of the state as of about 3:00 AM on Friday morning. Okay? Now, I am happy to do a Skype-in kind of thing, but we need to look at the criteria for calling the meeting.
It would have been very helpful if this kind of idea had been proposed before the board meeting.
We didn't.
Well, Chris, we only got, we only got the email from Ed this afternoon, which makes it very difficult to have the discussion.
My understanding is that we were all aware that the, in fact, in May, we were aware of this at the May meeting. In fact, I, I recall that there were board members that felt that they wanted to send a message of solidarity by not supporting, voting for the renewal then, which I understand and respect, your people's rights to do that. But people were well aware, my understanding is that the fiscal year ends at the end of June, and that, that's not new.
The other problem is that the, the dynamics of this, the state has to approve the contract, and it has to be signed before July 1st. So we would have to have the meeting tomorrow. It would have to be an emergency meeting in order to be held tomorrow. Okay? And then we would need to be able to get that up to the state and have them approve it, and return it back to us same day.
They can't do it by email? Or fax?
I don't know about that. I'm just saying that trying to get something turned around from the state on the same day...
Look at the windows at Elizabeth Shelton School, yes.
You know, it, it takes a long time to get these things to happen. I think we're already at the deadline.
This, this should be, this should be parallel tracks, one thing shouldn't have anything to do with the other.
Well, I guess, as I said earlier, you know, we're between a rock and a hard place. But let me put it this way, that if we go ahead and approve it, and the results of their negotiations next week fall apart, and we go another year with them negotiating, I will not vote to renew the contract.
That's fair? Right.
Any other discussion? Sensing we're ready.
I just want to say, this job is hard.
Yeah, I wanted to make a motion, mark, table the vote.
There is a motion on the table for, on the vote.
There's a, there's a motion to vote on it.
Well, he moved to table the motion.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
To table the motion?
Yes.
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay. Motion has been made to table the motion. Let's have a roll call vote.
Okay, Mrs. Yolesh.
Okay. To table the motion, yes.
Dr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mr. Manotti.
No.
Ms. Koutash.
No.
Mrs. Kilmartin.
No.
Mr. Holden.
No.
Mr. Gunkalz.
Yes.
Mr. Diwello.
Yes.
Mrs. Gados.
No.
Okay. The motion to table fails. Okay, on to the main motion. Sensing we're ready to vote. Well, well, let's do another roll call.
Okay, Mrs. Yolesh.
We'll repeat the main...
This is to vote for the contract.
To renew the contract.
No. Dr. Ritter.
No.
Mr. Manotti.
Yes.
Ms. Koutash.
Yes.
Mrs. Kilmartin. My vote is yes. Mr. Holden.
Yes.
Mr. Gunkalz.
No.
Mr. Diwello.
No.
Mrs. Gados.
Yes.
All righty, the motion passes. Okay. Policy committee.
Policy committee met at 5:00. On June 12th, we reviewed multiple documents regarding attendance, including our current attendance policy.
Ashley, if you could just wait for a moment while they clear the room.
Thank you, Amanda, thank you, Dave. Thanks, bro. You can pull off any of them.
There's, there should be no connection to the state requirements. That's why we tried to vote in any.
All righty, if you can continue with your report.
Okay, I'll start again. Policy committee met on Jul, on June 12th at 5:00, following teaching and learning. To start, we reviewed multiple documents with regarding attendance, including our current attendance policy, a draft attendance policy that has been the result of a district committee's months of work, and state statutes define, state statutes definitions regarding attendance. And because there was so much there to peruse, we will continue discussion on that topic in July. And looking at the July policy. We also were presented with a policy draft of a wellness policy, and again, for us to take a look at, and it will be brought up again at a future meeting when Mr. Niskier, people from the committee, can answer our questions. We will meet again July 16th, following teaching and learning. And we will be discussing the administrative regs for the attendance policy, the further discussion of the attendance policy, and the new board member orientation and votes we want to put together.
All righty. Public relations and outreach.
Uh, committee has nothing to report.
And CES?
The Rep Council meeting was held on June 7, 2018. Rome Smith and Woods gave a legislative update. The information that was provided was not written, and I'm waiting for an update so I could give out to all the members of the board. The 2019 regular meeting dates were set, and the next Rep Council meeting will be September 6, 2018, as they do not meet during July and August.
Okay, fine. Unfinished business, we have none, new business.
Oh, wait a minute, excuse me, we do have one. We had the bus survey mentioned in our minutes, and you are going to survey parents to see about the opting out?
Yeah, that's a summer project.
Okay. So we don't need to, we need to carry that over for unfinished business next time.
Okay. All righty. For your information, we have vacancy report, staff and stipend actions, and the enrollment report, highlights.
With, under new business, though, we got a letter that Chris sent to, that was sent to Chris regarding the racial balance within the schools. And because we have two schools that are out of compliance, we are required to submit a plan, and I'd like to know when that plan is going to be submitted. And I assume it's going to be reviewed by the board.
It would be part of our work with redistricting, because it's ultimately a redistricting issue. So you will be, that, that issue and board participation and updates will be part of that whole process.
So that, that, that fact will be forwarded then to the state to indicate how we are complying with the regulation?
Yes.
Chris, do you know, do you know, Lorraine, Lorraine made a very good point. She said when the state, they're not sure how they, what they factor in. I mean, there's many different cultures at the schools, so, I mean...
So I will, I will be checking with them and sharing that information with you, but I believe that they use the federal census set of standards in terms of defining races. As you know, there's really no such scientific thing as race, so those, those categories change over time. And so typically, because of that, they rely on this federal census definitions, which change themselves over time. But I will confirm that with you and get back to you. And, and this will be part of our discussion as we look to redistrict the school zones. And this is an added, this is an added source of contentiousness to that whole project, no question about it.
All righty. Highlights.
Kate, you want to go first, go ahead.
No, it was concert season. We, we had, Kathy and I were both at Perry Mills concert.
It was X.
And I, it was actually the first time I had heard the strings, and I was very impressed by the string performance, as well as the concert band and the choir as well. But that was a very good concert. The couple of weeks before that was the Shelton High School concert with the choir and the concert band and the jazz band, that was excellent as well. Many of us were at the senior awards night, where they, they were baking in the dough. And Sunnyside kindergarten also had a great program there.
Step Up.
Step Up Day, yes.
They did a great job, the both the children and, and, and the teachers.
They were a regular company there.
Oh, they were, they were really cute.
And Long Hill did a wonderful Step Up Proviium also, so just piggyback on there.
And just to add to that, I also went to the World Language Honor Society program to see so many kids involved in the languages. I mean, I was really impressed. French didn't have too much, but...
Is that the medal they were wearing at graduation, a lot of them that was...
Yes.
Yes, some of them, yeah, yeah.
That's what I thought, I was wondering.
And of course, then, the third-grade living museum at Elizabeth Shelton School, once again, was, I tell you, you want, you want the parents to come, you put on the, the show, and they shall come.
I have to give you an anecdote to go with that. There was a young man who did, correct me if I screw up the name, the golfer, Jordan Spieth, is that the name? He met him at the Hartford Open this weekend, had his big... He met him at the Hartford Open this week and has pictures.
Oh, wow. Oh, great, great. And then the art, we also have to mention the artwork at Perry Hill. Phenomenal. They did a really good, I don't, I don't know who, I don't remember who the art teachers were, but they did a great job. And Sunnyside Step Up Day and Long Hill both, they were, they were phenomenal. I mean, we have wonderful things going on in Shelton, and I think we all should be very, I'm sure we're proud. And I want to thank everybody that worked to make it a successful school year, considering everything that we had to go through. Overall, it really worked out very well.
Anybody else under highlights?
Yeah, I also want to recognize everybody that was part of the Shelton graduation at Shelton High School. Everything was organized well, and also the audio was a little better this year. Thanks.
It was very good.
I have a couple of things. First off, I didn't get to attend the graduation, unfortunately. My schedule didn't allow it, but I heard it was great and, you know, comments from members of the board have echoed that. I think it's also worth mentioning, recognizing the efforts, the tremendous effort that it took to get the field ready for that graduation. It wasn't that long ago, we sat in this room and listened to parents and students voicing their concerns about having graduation elsewhere. And just the extra mile that our folks went through to make sure that they were able to have graduation on the home field, I think deserves a lot of recognition and praise. I had the opportunity to go to various year-end activities. The schools all do different things, whether it's, you know, fourth grade graduation or the year-end picnics. They take so much work by parents and by volunteers who help out, and it just really struck me how lucky we are to have those kind of people involved in contributing to these kinds of activities for our kids. And then lastly, I have to say, this year has been rough, the last few months particularly so. These meetings are not necessarily at the top of my fun things to do list, but I do appreciate the presentations that we do at the beginning, the recognitions, and it's a reminder to me why we do this, watching these kids with their ideas and their creativity, watching our teachers, these things that they come up with to make education engaging for our students. I think tonight was a highlight for me, seeing that. And then finally, I know it's, it was a little bit raucous earlier, but I do want to just publicly say that I do appreciate the advocacy of parents and of our workers coming out and being part of the community and part of what it takes to run a school district and voicing their opinions, and I think we do a good job of listening and considering them all we can, and I, I just, I want that to continue. I want people to feel like they can continue to come and speak to us, and I think we do a good job of that.
It's hard sometimes to make the decisions.
It's painful. I mean, it literally, physically makes me want to.
People don't always see the way, what we see.
I agree.
Additional information we have.
I agree.
Anyone else have something under highlights? Okay. I'll go last with a couple of items. First off, June 2nd, my wife and I had the pleasure of attending the 25th anniversary, or 20th anniversary party for the Galehawks Robotics Team. And it was really cool because they had a bunch of team members and mentors from past years. And one of the things that was great was to see that kids who had been part of the robotics program way back when have moved on and they're now engineers, and they're giving back as mentors of some robotics teams in other communities. And that's a terrific thing. Graduation, that was certainly a terrific thing. As I said, people really worked together on that, and that was an amazing opportunity for us. I also wanted to talk about the opportunities that we have coming up over the summer for public outreach and advocacy, because we do need to do more within our community. A lot of people were surprised at what happened at the end of the budget season, and they really expected that somehow or another, a rabbit was going to get pulled out of a hat and we're going to end up okay. And here we are, we've had to make some really horrible cuts, and we need to start changing things so that, A, people understand our needs really are real, and B, they understand that we really are careful with the money that we have. So, with that, we will move on to our next item, which is an executive session to discuss a legal matter. At this point, those of you who are not on the board or necessary for this discussion are invited to leave. We will come back into session for a turn. Okay, Ed and Carol, if you would stay.
Oh, and Lorraine.
Oh, and Lorraine, yes. But in any event, I anticipate that the only thing that will happen when we come out of executive session is that we will adjourn, so there's really not a reason to hang around unless.